Criminals to avoid our community.
Recording in progress.
Yeah. That was on my phone. So, and then, you know, other thing I'd like to mention is that, and you don't, this never makes its way to social media, never makes its way into the, into the newspapers, but I'm certainly aware of it, the trustees are aware of it. There are many occasions where the police department has been aware of a potential crime, you know, suspicious activity in the village, and they've taken action to prevent a crime before it happens. You never read about that, you don't, you don't hear about that, but I can tell you that happens on many, many occasions. And those instances, of course, as I said, never make their way into the newspaper or into social media. The crime statistics and trends are available online, and you look at them, you'll see very good results in Hinsdale, and I encourage residents to look at these statistics as well. In short, we are very aware of the increase in crime, we're taking specific steps to address the increase. We have the good fortune of having an outstanding and accomplished police chief in Brian King. We have an excellent police department that is well-equipped and well-funded, and if, and we are doing our best to prevent crime and to apprehend criminals after crimes occur. If you wanted more information on this, I suggest that as an initial step, you attend the community communication or conversation with Chief King, which will occur again on Tuesday, August 2nd, in the library at 7:00 PM. That takes us to, I lost my schedule. I think that takes us to the proclamation. Proclamation. This is designation of July as Park and Recreation Month. Whereas Parks and Recreation is an integral part of communities throughout the country, including the village of Hinsdale, Illinois, and whereas Parks and Recreation promote health and wellness, improve the physical and mental health of people who live near parks, and whereas Parks and Recreation promotes time spent in nature, which positively impacts mental health by increasing cognitive performance and well-being, and alleviates illnesses such as depression, attention deficit disorder, and Alzheimer's, and whereas Parks and Recreation encourages physical activity, providing space for popular sports, hiking trails, swimming pools, and many other activities designated to promote active lifestyles. And whereas Parks and Recreation's programs and education activities such as out-of-school time programs, youth sports, and environmental education are critical to childhood development, and whereas Parks and Recreation increase a community's economic prosperity through increased property values, expansion of local tax base, increased tourism, and the attraction of, and retention of businesses, and crime education, and whereas Parks and Recreation is essential and adaptive infrastructure that makes our communities resilient in the face of natural disasters and climate change, and whereas our parks and natural recreation areas ensure the ecological beauty of our community and provide a space for children and adults in connection with nature, and rec, and recreate outdoors, and whereas the U.S. House of Representatives has designated July as Park and Recreation Month, and whereas Hinsdale recognizes the benefits derived from Parks and Recreation resources, now therefore be it resolved that I, Tom Colley, Village President of the Village of Hinsdale, do hereby proclaim that July is recognition of Parks and Recreation Month in the Village of Hinsdale, DuPage, County of DuPage. Thank you. I have to figure out who writes these things. I've been president for 14 years, I never figured out who writes these proclamations.
Usually the organization provides what they want to say.
Okay. All right. Citizens' petition. Any citizen who wants to speak on any matter that's on or off the agenda, now's the time. We can, we have another one of these at the end. Is this for your project, or is this?
Yeah.
Okay.
I just wanted to share a phone call I received. My roommate at Notre Dame is a gentleman named Derek Schenk, and he's the owner of the Verizon store. And I won't share because of what you said, President Colley, about how they caught this guy, but he had been robbed four times in six weeks in various communities throughout Illinois. This is the first community that followed through on an ability to find these guys, and I just applaud you, Chief, I had a chance to say that earlier, and it turns out that we may be able to help identify these other crimes through our efforts. So, it's unique that we're taking this level of proactivity. I wish more communities were doing it, and I do think it sends the right message. So, we applaud you, Chief, way to go, and I love getting phone calls like that, I hate hearing what happened, and uniquely Thursday's going on, but man, we send the right message going after these guys, so, good job.
And I, actually, it's more than that. I mean, there would have been some of these thefts of telephone stores before, and that the police knew that this was going to happen, so they actually took steps to, to, you know, make sure that if it did happen, they could apprehend the person quickly. So, this was actually planning on the part of the police, and that's what the community wants, what are we doing to plan? We're doing lots of stuff, but again, if we put that on social media, you know, they would have done something different than they did do. So, I agree with you, but it was not just catching him, it was also pre-planning.
Well, he wants to move here now, so terrific, and away to go, Chief.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Okay, that takes us to Matt.
Yes. So this is item 7A, first read, it's an ordinance to transfer appropriations within departments of the village. In February 2021, we passed an appropriations ordinance with legal spending limits for the village for 2021, that was based on the 2021 budget, and now that the 2021 audit is wrapping up, we are required by state law to amend that ordinance to transfer funds where expenses in one line item exceed the appropriations for that item. And this is done by transferring amounts from other line items in that department where there are surpluses. There are two line items where there are significant excesses that I wanted to at least mention. The first is for litigation, obviously something that's not totally within the village's control, it's often hard to anticipate what those expenses are going to be. The other one is a sales tax incentive that's being paid to Land Rover, and there it's important to note that we have the sales tax revenue that's obviously higher and offsets those payments. There is no village fund that exceeded its total 2021 annual appropriation, so we're all still completely within budget, but it's something that we're required by state law to do. Any questions? I think this has to be a second read as opposed to incentive item.
Is that right?
Yeah.
Okay. Second read.
Second read.
Neil?
Okay. All right, so item 7B is to approve an updated intergovernmental agreement with the, between the Illinois State Toll, Tollway Authority to provide fire protection and emergency services. So for the past several years, actually going back to 1995, Hinsdale is contracted with the Tollway Authority to cover northbound lanes of I-294 from milepost 25.0 to 28.0 and south, and similar southbound lanes. So basically, if there's an accident along those, along that area, they'll provide fire protection and emergency services. Previously, the charge for that was we would, we would charge the Illinois Tollway $300 per incident. Now with this new agreement, we're going to charge them $500 for each response, and as I understand that, Chief, that's $500 flat fee as soon as we leave the, leave the station?
Yeah, so before it was $300, we could bill if it was a non-transport, and then if it were transported, and we would bill them accordingly per our ambulance fees. Now we get $500 no matter what, even if we show up and there's nobody there, we still bill the tollway $500, and then if we transport, we then bill the, the transport fee also.
So we bill the transport fee to the tollway?
No, that goes to the patient.
That's to the person who's injured?
Right, right.
Right, right.
I think the way it used to be, if you billed the person, you didn't get reimbursed for the toll.
Right, you didn't get the $300.
Now you get $500 no matter what, and you bill the person and get the $500.
Correct, and then the $100 is an increase, or this has been going on forever for all the communities that cover the tollway. It's been, I've been on the committee, and it's, it's gone nowhere for a long time, dealing with the tollway is, is tough. But no, we did get this, and we do get a little bit of an increase, which does help, but if there's a hazmat or semi-fire, we still bill for that extrication, we, the fire department bills extra for that to the, the insurance company.
Okay. And this, and this billing is going to go up $10 every year?
Yeah, it's not a lot, but it, it's something.
Yeah, that's good. The one question I have, the way the agreement is written, as I go back into the agreement, it said, it says here that we will bill the patient for treatment and transport to the hospital. In the legalese, in the actual agreement, it said, nothing in this agreement shall prohibit the department from billing any patient, including the insurance provider, for ambulance transportation to receive emergency medical care. So I don't know if treatment works into that or not.
Yeah.
Treatment can be, we could, we could call treating a patient is, is, we get them in the back of the ambulance, and we can treat them. If they deny transport, then that's a refusal, and for us, we can't bill that out as a refusal. Treatment, it's usually treatment and transport, we, once we transport, we can then bill them out.
Okay. I'm just wondering if this needs to say treatment?
Yeah.
So maybe we can look at that between now and?
Sure. And this is, this is agreement that's not just us, though, right?
It's not just us, this is anybody that covers the tollway.
Yeah.
Okay. Oh, that's right, yeah, so you're not going to change that.
And we did this, we did send this to our legal also, and he reviewed it.
Right, because I mean, the upshot of it is that previously you got $300, and if you billed the patient, you didn't get the $300.
Correct.
Now the upshot of it is, as I understand it, is you get the $500 irrespective if you billed a patient. They, they can't deny us the $500, no matter what happens, so.
As soon as you leave the station.
Correct, yes. Once we respond, even if, even if there's no accident, there's nobody there, and we just drive back, we get $500.
Right, but it, but now, as opposed to, under the new agreement as opposed to the old agreement, if you billed the patient before, you would not get reimbursed for the tollway.
That's correct.
Now you will, irrespective, so I think they tried to carve out anything relating to patients from the agreement.
Correct.
I just wish it said treatment, in addition to.
We could try, we could try to make the.
The treatment part is if we treat them a lot like a diabetic patient, we can treat them, give them, give them glucose, they're going to wake up and they're going to sign a refusal, we can't bill them for that, we have to bill for the transport, so if we, if we transport them, that's the point, we can actually bill them.
Well.
Bill the patient itself.
Hard to change that.
Yeah, I think so.
All right. All right, so that's a first read, Echo Consent Agenda.
Yeah, I think so.
Luke? Yep, which brings us to agenda item 7C, and this pertains to the proposed development at 125 South Vine Street, and is commonly referred to as the Vine Street Station, which is the redevelopment of the existing Zion Lutheran Church School Building into a 12-unit lifestyle housing condominium complex. This matter was before us in April, and this board referred the matter to the Plan Commission for a public hearing. This matter is now back in front of us, as Plan Commission has provided its input on the general concept plan. The application is being submitted by Holiday Property Services Midwest and Zion Lutheran Church, which is the existing owner of the property. The applicant is here this evening, is going to run through the details of the proposed project. From a very high-level overview, the applicant is looking to utilize the existing building with no additional increase to the footprint or the square footage of the building, and with no increase in the current non-conforming aspects of the property. I think it's important, this, so, I view this from a zoning perspective, this is a very complex process for us, we've got a lot of changes going on, so I think it's important that we run through the process, and I'll leave some of the details over to the applicants and then for the trustees to ask. But as far as the process, as I had mentioned before, this, this was referred to the Plan Commission, and the Plan Commission did hold a public hearing on this matter in, in late May. I would note that there were two residents that did show up and provide input at the public hearing. They provided their input, was, they had some concerns, but overall, they were generally supportive of the project. At our next meeting, so our meeting in August, we will vote to either approve or reject to what is referred to as the concept plan. If the board does approve the concept plan, then more details are provided by the applicant regarding engineering, exterior architectural details, landscaping, and the very fine details of the project. I think it's important for the board and everyone to understand that we do this in a multi-step process, so that if we reject something outright, that the applicant doesn't incur several hundreds, thousands of dollars, and, you know, we can tell them no sooner rather than later. Also, if we, once they go in, if they, if it is approved at the general concept plan, and it does go to a detailed plan, it will go back in front of Plan Commission and have another public hearing, again with resident input. So for our vote, which the matter we have in front of us this evening, but for our vote next month, in addition to voting on the concept plan, approval of the concept plan, we'll also be voting to, on a text amendment to allow lifestyle housing as a special use in the 01 district. Second, approval of a concept plan of a planned development at 125 South Vine Street, a special use permit to allow lifestyle housing and a PD in the 01 district, and lastly, a major adjustment to the existing PD for Zion Lutheran, as they'll be taking a portion of their property out of the P, uh, planned development, it requires approval to keep the planned development in place. So that would be at our, at our August meeting. As we move past our August meeting and look what we have to do, then, following approvals at, at a later date would include a map amendment, and that map amendment would change 125 South Vine Street from the institutional building, or IB district, to 01. And I would note that changing it to 01 is a more restrictive zoning district, and also 01 is the same district that is immediately to the north of the subject property. So 01 right now is a very good buffer zone, which this falls into, so at least me personally, I see that map amendment, which this village takes very seriously, as more restrictive and a good thing, and also consistent with other parts of the neighborhood. We would also, to future date, approve a tentative plat of subdivision and a final plat of subdivision, approval of the detailed plan, which has all of the engineering, landscaping plans, and architectural details on the outside, and then finally exterior appearance and site plan review. Before turning it over to the applicant for a quick presentation and summary on the project, I would note that, that there, there were things that were discussed at the Plan Commission, and we had certain conditions that we, we pushed it forward to the Plan Commission, that I want to bring out and put just on an agenda item for us to discuss this evening. One was, at least in the general con, or in the initial concept plan, the applicant had parking spaces as eight feet wide versus nine feet, which is required by code. It was the board's general feeling, we'd like to see nine feet, just as, as we potentially have more of these types of developments, that we don't set a precedent to, you know, decrease the size of parking lots. Also, age-restricted versus age-targeted. This board moved it to Plan Commission with a desire to have it be age-restricted. The Plan Commission discussed the matter, and they really didn't see an issue for this property being age-targeted. I would note that the applicant then also provided some consultant's views on different propos, or on different projects in Clarendon Hills and also Hinsdale Meadows, saying that it's not much of a impact in the, for the school districts. However, it's, it's at least, it's still my opinion that we should have this as age-restricted as opposed to age-targeted, again, as setting precedent for future developments. Number three would be the discussion on the, the depth of the parking space. I think that they've got, right, the applicant right now has a 20-foot depth, and only 18 is required by code, but they're looking for certain relief on the width of the, I don't want to call it the runway, but the, thank you very much, in the parking garage. Also, there was discussion, we, we initially moved this to Plan Commission, saying that on Second Street, we wanted to keep it a one-way street. Well, there was discussion about the benefits of perhaps making this a two-way street. Residents and the applicant at least seemed to be supportive of having it be a two-way street, so as we, I, I want to discuss that tonight here as board, and if necessary, have that evaluation be part of the detailed plan process. I don't think this was discussed at Plan Commission, but I moved it on, I think as part of a plan, as part of any plan development, we should have a restriction on rentals to be a minimum of at least six months, so that we don't have overnight rentals in the area. And then lastly, I'd like to have a discussion at this board with regards to the parks. They've got a very good, our illustration in here of the open space, three different open spaces that they're going to have to the, to the west, to the south, and to the east of the property, and I know there were different desires from certain trustees, so I'd like to review that. So that's all that I've got, I've opened it up to the applicant and then to trustees for questions. Did I lose my presentation?
All right, thank you. My name is Chris Walsh, I'm with Tandem Architecture, we presented before. We're not going to talk through the whole project again, but we did want to talk about what's changed. You mentioned the parking spaces, and we are working on the parking spaces, the, the issue we have, and we talked with the Plan Commission a little bit, we're, this is an existing building, our parking is confined to existing walls, we're going to be putting new structure in there, we're not quite sure where that's going to lay out, because we're going to have to support the new building. We have circled back and redone a lot of the parking, we've gotten nine-foot spaces on all but two so far, and I think what we'll need to do is just really do a thorough measuring of the building at this point, and I, we're pretty comfortable we'll get there. I guess if we did have a couple of spaces that were not nine feet, we would come back and present why and all that. As for the 18-foot depth, we agree, they should be 18 feet, I don't know what happened, I think at some point, they were 18, and then we got pushed back to 20, and, so I think we're going to be able to wipe that out as well. So I think the next time we see you, we'll have 18-foot depths on the parking spaces and a 24-foot aisle width.
So it's 18, not 20?
Yeah, the, the code is 18-foot deep on the parking spaces and the nine-foot width.
But what more important is the, the runway.
Yeah, sure, sure.
It's supposed to be 24 for code, and they brought it down to 20, so that's, it'll put it back in within compliance.
So, the other change we made is we've, we've changed the bedrooms, this is another discussion, we're now, we don't have any more three-bedroom units, we're two bedrooms plus den and two-bedroom units. We had two three-bedroom units on each floor. We've decided, and Drew will go into this a little bit more, but now we're no more three-bedroom units. There was concern on east elevation that was a little bit bare, and it was discussed that, you know, in this portion of the building, we could, we should add something, so we've looked at that. We've, we're proposing, we're going to add a, a window at the end of this hallway, and trellis with vines, which we already had on the wall next to the staircase. So this rendering now shows, you know, two new windows here, your vine, trellis up the side of the stairwell, and the design for the, the trellis that we had before.
And that was a result of some input from the?
Yeah, just input that, you know, the rest of the building looks good, but driving down the street, that really is going to look kind of bare, so we agree. So, and then this is just an updated rendering, it's hard to see, but we did add the vines and the window, it's just you're kind of getting a little bit of a peek there, and then again. So, and I'm going to hand it over to Drew, and he's going to go over a couple of other ones.
Good evening, Board. Good evening, President Colley, trustees, and staff. I'm Drew Mitchell, I'm a partner with Holiday Properties, I'm a resident of Hinsdale. We're really excited about the opportunity to potentially save this building. It is a tricky project, I'm not even going to attempt to repeat what Trustee Stifler did as it relates to the process here, that was about as succinct as you could get. Chris, I think, did an adequate job addressing parking. We are playing, there's a balancing act between the width of these parking spaces and trying to provide two parking spaces per unit, which is ideal. I think Chris appropriately stated that when we get to the detailed plan submission, which is really the next step, we hope to have all nine-foot, and perhaps there's one or, so what the objective would be is have nine feet, and then if we have a couple of loose teeth, we would address those. Curiously, at the Plan Commission, we have tried to not fall on our sword on age-restricted versus age-targeted, and remain mostly agnostic towards that particular topic. They felt that perhaps it would create unnecessary, or unintended consequences, I think was the phrase that was used, for example, you have an aging homeowner whose son or daughter would take care of them, and they are, for, they could pass, and then do they need to exit the residence quickly, things like that. I think the intent for age-restricted versus age-targeted really relates to the potential for increasing the number of schoolchildren in the district, and that's where we passionately believe there, there will not be any net new addition of children to the district, just based on our experience. If you were to bring children to this community, there are plenty of properties that would be more around the half a million dollar mark, that would provide much more value than this. However, we continue to not want this to be a primary topic for, for this particular project, and are willing to defer to the board's judgment on that particular item. As it relates to the three-bed versus two-bed plus den, this decision was made expressly to avoid additional desire for families to take residence in these units and potentially introduce new schoolchildren. There was some discussion around the potential for divorcees to move into here, and whether we would want to restrict this building from the available housing stock for somebody in that living situation. Again, we are not trying to resolve that necessarily at this moment. It certainly makes our lives easier to have an age-targeted approach, but again, we're not wanting to fall on our sword on that. As it relates to the two-way, there is great advice given to us by President Colley on whether Second Street becomes two-way. We did attempt to avoid that becoming a topic, because we don't want the tail wagging the dog. Again, we remain relatively agnostic towards whether that be one-way or two-way. If it solves a neighborhood problem, and we can solve that in conjunction with this project's approval, we'd be happy to incorporate that in any of our plans and designs as we move ahead. I do appreciate this process here in Hinsdale. While it perhaps has additional steps relative to other communities, it does exactly what Trustee Stifler said, which is avoid massive investment in a project to potentially result in, in an unfavorable rendering. So really what we're looking for is temperature, to move along to this next step and really devote considerable resources towards understanding this building, knowing whether we can accomplish what we believe we can accomplish, and returning you with these detailed plans ranging from traffic to structural, to landscaping, to the building design and the parking layouts. I think that covers, I was meant to talk a little bit more about, we did engage TESCA, this was at the encouragement of the Plan Commission to formally study the number of school-aged children that would be projected in the development. They utilize data tables based on ZIP codes, demographics, and unit types, and it projects up to two potential children in the building. Interestingly, they take a more sort of fiscal or economic approach to studying the development, and basically it's accretive to budgets, rate, you know, everybody that is on the tax bill, and that's not a surprise, because currently there are no taxes generated on the parcel due to its not-for-profit status. If we were to have two school-aged children in the development, it would still be accretive to the school district. However, we don't believe that would happen. And I would just point quickly to, we interviewed Mike Van Zant, he's a Clarendon Hills resident, and he developed an eight-unit condominium project at the Corner Park and Prospect in Clarendon Hills, they're in our same school district. Just asked him about his experience, he provided an email that was submitted in conjunction with the other materials, and they have no children in their development. So, again, not trying to allow these particular topics to, you know, overtly influence what we're trying to accomplish, which is condominium project in, in Zion School. With that, Mike, would you like to add anything? Okay.
So there are two issues that Luke raised that I don't know that you've spoken to. One was the rental.
Oh, and I have a note on that. That's no problem. I think what we would do is we would write that into the covenants for the, the condominium association that, and this did, this came up actually at neighborhood meetings as well, where residents just expressed concern about transient nature of rentals, particularly the temporary nature of an Airbnb-type of rental. We do believe that that could be a possibility here, particularly with the lack of close, closely located hotels. So we'd be happy to incorporate that into the covenants of, of the condominium association.
And then the, the last issue I had on my list was, there, there, you have three, like, pocket parts.
Correct, thank you.
One of them was going to be, two of them are going to be public, and one of them you'd like to see private, just for the residents. Can you explain that?
Sure. So there's really, there's really three elements, if, Chris, perhaps you could help.
And for trustees, if you look in your book of the big pullouts that they have, it's the very last, second, so second to last and last page of the 11-by-7 cards, which are folded up in that.
So as you're navigating towards that exhibit, let me just describe these three portions of the overall development project. The most obvious that in our minds should be quasi-public or public would be the western portion of the site. That is where our, that is our prominent corner. We could imagine people utilizing this, this pocket park for a coffee or to rest on a walk to the pool or whatever that may be. The part that to us most really should be private is the portion that's immediately in front of the building on the south facade. And the reason there is that that's really designed to be the outdoor living room. We don't have rooftop, we're not planning a rooftop amenity in this building. This would be where you would have grilling. There would be an outdoor TV, perhaps a water feature to add some ambient noise. And it's really their outdoor living room. The portion of the project that I would say is up for debate would be the eastern portion here that's depicted between the current Zion School and the pastor's home. And, you know, I think in this next stage of the process, we really need to refine our plans for what we, what we intended to do with that site. We aren't necessarily opposed to it being public. However, I think we'd like to not promote that. Where it could be something that people that live in the neighborhood could utilize. But we're open to suggestions and ideas on that. We, you know, we're going to have 12 couples probably living here and we'd like that to feel like it's theirs. You know, they're going to be paying to maintain it. However, we're open to suggestions on whether that should be public, quasi-public, private. And we believe that we need to further refine our plans for that space.
So the private in the front, is that going to be fenced in?
It would be. Chris, could you help me describe our plans for the fence and? While he's doing that, the intent would be to add a door on the ingress egress on the southwestern portion of the site. Right here, you don't, you don't see it right now, but we'd like to add a door that exits onto, onto this private patio. We'd really like it to be a little bit more visually restrictive, so it feels a little bit more private. We think we can accomplish that through masonry, through iron fencing and through foliage.
What are the dimensions of that park, Drew?
It's about 20 feet deep by the length of the building, which is maybe 60 feet.
20 by 60?
Yeah, it's around there.
And there's the one gate on the right side there where someone could actually enter from the sidewalk.
Yes, you would enter here and I think what we're missing is some sort of separation between that gate and actually this sort of private outdoor living room. And so there would be furniture out there and multiple residents, because you could use it at the same time. And there wouldn't be grilling on the balconies. That's another thing that came up at one point. That may perhaps how the neighborhood mean, but no story and stuff on the balconies. We once had a kayak on a balcony and had to rewrite leases to get, I digress.
So this is the, the area that's the eastern portion that, you know, we had talked about, whether it should be public or private. We've gone back and forth, you know, to Drew's point, this is the only private space right now for the residents.
Outdoor private.
Outdoor private space. You know, this, there's a concern where it could become the public dog park, you know, where people just kind of come over there and feel, you know, and you may have issues with the residents down the road saying, "We're paying for all this and now everybody and their brother, you know, runs her dog through my yard and there's nothing I can do." So I think, you know, Holiday is fine with this corner being the public space and providing for that. But I think, you know, these two would be, we feel better as just private spaces for the condo owners to maintain.
The intent with this eastern portion would be a sitting garden. It would be well manicured. It would be inviting. And then there's been really some oscillation between whether or not we incorporate a pet element to it. In our developments, generally that's a cornerstone that, they're pet-friendly buildings. And so perhaps we're bringing that a little bit too much to this development. And perhaps we could, we could get additional feedback, you know, or, I mean, but I think we could refine our expectations for that plan and have a little bit more of a robust vision for that when we reappear before this body.
Do any of the trustees have firm views on the western or sort of the eastern, eastern park?
I just don't know how you prevent people from using the park. I mean, it's open.
Yeah.
Right? I mean, I mean, the, the south park is enclosed, obviously. I mean, that, you know.
Right.
I get that, but just as a practical matter, if someone is walking down the street and it's, I mean, I mean, the residents, in order to use it, they've got to walk across their driveway. It's, there's a, there's a separation there anyway, as opposed to the south park where you could actually like go right from inside the building to the park, you know?
So you're identifying sort of the challenge that we've also identified is how do we thoughtfully incorporate this, this great square footage into the project? And I think for that reason, there are some times where we're like, well, let's just make it open to the public. And I think by not declaring it public or private, perhaps it serves that, that purpose. I mean, I could see a, take a book, read a book out there and now you're sort of inviting people in. And perhaps we leave it up to the HOA and they have some control over this down the road as they start to live here and get comfortable with how the development operates and functions. So long as we give them a good canvas to start with and work with.
Yeah, that, that may be the solution. Just leave it open and then just don't, don't advertise it as a place you can come and play football, you know? Because there's a, there's a bench out here in front of the, the development across the street.
Washington Square.
Washington Square, where people sit on that bench that I know are residents of Washington Square.
Yeah, I've sat there.
Yeah. I know, it's not, it was called Washington Square like three iterations ago, whatever it is now.
It's not even even.
It's not even even anymore. But in any event, you know, people use the area, but it's not heavily used because it's not advertised as a park, but as a bench that faces the street. So if you have something like that where you're not, it would be like, you know, not advertise, I agree with you. Not advertising it apart, but not fencing it in.
Right.
You could have something where it's just a low intensity use. If somebody wants to walk through it, they can. But we're not calling it a Hinsdale Park.
Yeah, I, I'd love to quickly react to that. I think that that probably is the right way to approach it. And even as I think about our cellar, which is Zion Church, perhaps is a place where there, there could be prayer or meditation quietly and we're not restricting that access, which I think would be nice. So I, I think we can take that advice and work on our approach.
Drew, is there a, the way this is pictured here looks like a boundary between the east end of the park and what is this, the church here or the?
Yeah, so the.
Home parsonage.
It's the pastor's house.
It's the pastor's home. And, and there is, there's an existing wooden fence that sort of visually delineates the two parcels. Chris, can you help me? I can't remember if we're right on that line or just west of it.
We're currently 15 feet approximately. This, this dash line is where the fence currently is. It'll actually move and increase the size of this lot.
And that helps with non-conformity of the remaining home block.
Yeah, so that house will be conforming.
But it creates a weird, what do you do with that, right? And you don't want there to be a forgotten about, you know, area where weeds grow forever. I'm not trying to create.
No, it's to put the fence up and landscape up on the side of, on the outside.
Yeah, we didn't put the landscaping plan, but you have it. But it is pretty heavily landscaped all around the three sides.
The tricky thing about it, it's like a dead end. It's just one way in.
Yeah, yeah.
Right. And the idea at one point was to really, if there was a pet element, which we've done turf systems or limestone base and the poop bags and we know how to do those. But does that create yelping and barking and the backside or the north side is really is a parking lot that's for the, the office to the north. So we didn't really think that it would be disruptive. And again, it could be rethought if, if the residents decide that, that that doesn't make sense. Pet ownership does tend to decline with age. And so I worry that we're bringing our experience in other projects too much and encouraging that use here where maybe it doesn't properly fit. And I don't know how to get to the bottom of that quite yet.
Drew, early on we showed a dog, dog run label.
Yeah.
And it came up.
Yeah, that's what had legs, as you would, I want to say. Yeah, so I think, you know, the, as Drew said, we're open to, you know, leaving it open. And, but I think you just want to give the tools to the residents at a later date. If people are abusing it, what's their recourse?
Right.
I think that's all we really want.
And maybe there's a way where on Second Street, we repeat some of the masonry that we're doing for the, the outdoor living room and there's an arch or some way where it's not completely open for that entire width of, of the park, but it's sort of arched and inviting and there's a little haven behind it. I, I don't know. It's special. We have it.
This is a detail you can kind of leave to the end, right? Because it doesn't require a lot of work.
Yes, it, it, that's right. It doesn't require a ton of work. It just requires a little bit of vision and executing on that and maybe a good landscape architect. So, and, and I think Mike's point on the dog run, I think I keep bringing it up. Maybe it's because I love animals. I don't know. Well, we're going to leave it out. It's just to decide that once and for all, so.
Can I ask just a clarifying point? What is happening with Lot Two?
Lot Two?
So you've got Lot One, which is the, the main building, and then you have the pastor's residence. What's happening with the pastor's residence? Is nothing happening with it or?
So the pastor's residence will, it will get a little bit larger, about 15 feet in depth. So it'll bring it up to code, I believe it's 150 feet by 100 feet. So it will, will conform with the current zoning.
The residents just stay.
Yeah, so just, it just stays. We're not touching the home. Yeah.
Church campus and that, that underlying plan development.
Unless we can convince Pastor Klein to move in and be our rector.
So this will, this will go to a single-family residence? Is that?
It already, it currently is.
Well, I know it currently is, but it will remain a single-family residence.
Yes, that's correct.
But you're going to develop it and then, I mean, somewhat of a different project, but as, as part of a overall plan, is that being discussed?
It's actually, was originally contemplated as part of the overall project. It no longer is. It's been carved out of the purchase and sale agreement. It is intended to remain as the pastor's residence in.
So Zion remains the owners of that property?
That's correct. Yes. And really the changing of the lot width related to trying to reduce the non-conformity of that remaining existing single-family homes lot.
Okay. Another question off topic from the park situation, but do you have something, I realize it's conceptual, but just in terms of like price point, what you guys are targeting?
We, we do. However, it's with the current commodity prices and also rising interest rates, which has a negative effect on potential price points. It's really hard to say. We've gotten a lot of phone calls about this. And we, we, we just don't envision this being over a million dollars. We think that it's somewhere in a, probably a $700,000 starting price point up to somewhere in the mid-nines. It's going to be very dependent upon what the ultimate finishes are in this unit. These are other questions that we have internally, whether we want to actually go and design all of these units. Do we invite prospective residents to work with a designer that we engage to pick the units and they get allowances? And we're looking forward to solving those questions. However, it felt inappropriate to spend a lot of time and energy on that when we were still trying to ascertain whether this had viability at the municipal level.
Right, I know. I completely understand. Just, it was more of a, out of curiosity, if you came back and said, you know, we're looking to charge $2 million, crazy number. But, you know, obviously we don't want things to sit vacant.
Right.
So it's, it's more or less together.
Oh, I follow you.
We want to make sure there's demand for it. There's demand for it. It's within.
We're convinced demand is very, very strong for this product type. And really what we've encountered professionally, not just in this market, but throughout the Midwest, lack of housing for downsizing empty nesters. It just doesn't exist. They want to maintain their roots close to town. They may have grandkids here or in the next town over and there's no place to live that's low maintenance. So it does seem to be a problem that's pervasive. We project project costs on this to be somewhere in the neighborhood of seven to eight million dollars. And our exit on this is projected to be somewhere in nine to 10 million dollars. And there's a ton of risk inside of that. And what I would say is nobody's really trying to make a lot of money on this. This has really become sort of a pet project because our kids, my children went to preschool there. We love Pastor Klein, the Zion folks, and we saw an opportunity coming out of the D-181 and that office analysis, which said this building was obsolete. And, and we thought it's probably going to get torn down. So we aren't doing this to lose money. I can promise you that. But, you know, my, I, I mentioned this either at the Plan Commission or at previous Village Wars. I've been hassled by my partners for working on this project because they all take the same amount of time.
True. Yeah, I mean, I, just getting back to the age-restricted versus age-targeted, I'm very biased towards the age-restricted.
Okay.
As it relates to a project this, I think that, given that you obviously have done your homework as it relates to demand, I think that that demand would also, you know, I don't think you're limiting the number of individuals that would want to purchase a property like this necessarily where if your demand projections are what you think they are. And so, I mean, I, just as fairness to you, that's something that I'm very biased towards.
Okay.
You know, as a board member.
Well, and I, and I have great respect for that. I think the messaging that we heard at the Plan Commission came particularly from a realtor who felt that it was potentially limiting the, the people that could potentially buy it and could create a problem on a sale. And again, I respect your position and, and I'm not willing to try to negotiate that with you because we will agree to it. Do we think that it could have unintended consequences? Yes, we do. And, and so I would invite consideration of what those potential unintended consequences are. Put yourself in that position as an elderly person who may need somebody to stay. Or the question came up, could my grandkids stay with me for a month? And could a neighbor start saying, hey, your grandkids are here and they shouldn't be here? And it was that level of dialogue?
Right. And questions like that, I think, though, can be handled through the way you write your covenants. So, but I mean, from an overall sales standpoint, that, to me, the conceptually, age-restricted makes a lot more sense to me. I'm a customer. I mean, I would be a customer of this. And so I would, I would want to see some stipulation like that just because not only with.
Are you old enough?
Well, I'm sorry. I'm getting there.
Okay.
And, but with regard to the, I mean, just in terms of impacts of schools, but there's, there's a whole other, a lot of components that go along with that.
And I understand that. And you know, the precedent argument really holds water for us that should another project appear before this board and be seeking this lifestyle housing special exception within an office district, that they could point to our project and say, "Look, it was granted at that point." What, what I don't know that I totally agree with is that we could sort of, in a cavalier way, write in an HOA covenant that kids can stay here for a month and a half if it potentially flies in the face with an interpretation of an ordinance that restricts the age of people that are living in the building. And so again, I'm, perhaps that's an attorney question, but we would like to avoid unintended consequences.
Yeah, no, I understand. I mean, you're, this is a great project. I really, I think it's a fantastic project.
Well, thank you. Thank you. We are, we're very excited about it. And there's a lot to celebrate. And there's really a tremendous building here with great bones and elements that we intend to really, really highlight. We're going to have fun with this and I think you'll all be very proud of it.
So simply to bring us back to the parks, you know, we've got these three parks. I think there's, you know, general conclusion that the one middle park should be the outdoor living area for residents only. The one on the west side, open to the public. We still have the one that's on the east side. And I don't know if we have, you know, do we send it to back to Plan Commission with direction or uncertainty? Or do we solve that puzzle tonight or next month?
Well, I'd like, I like the option that it's, it's not fenced in and it would be open to the public, but it's not advertised as such.
I, I agree with that. I just want to make sure.
And then there'd be some, some, something maybe in the HOA rules that if, in, in, in the event that there's some issue there, that some mechanism for them to make it more restrictive if there's an issue.
I mean, so that, what that stops is if someone decides to have a family reunion.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
They can stop it. Okay.
So we could do that.
Okay.
But as I said, I think.
I think that's clear enough for to develop some guidelines around it. And perhaps that makes its way into the covenants of the HOA and then they can, they can post signage. So it, it will be quasi-public at the discretion of the HOA.
Right.
And should they identify that it's being abused in some manner, then it could be addressed. And I do really like the idea of it being a place of recluse, is that the word? For the church members. I mean, you know, I think that they would enjoy that. And they have been very, very cooperative with our development team in this process and in the timeframe associated with it, because I think that they believe in the end result as well. So, and directly answer your question, I think that's clear enough for us to act upon that and develop our plan accordingly.
And then Bethany, can you provide us a 30 to 60-second summary on the current status of Second Street? And if we did turn it into a two-way, what the? of Second Street, and if we did turn it into a two-way, what the advantage of it would be? And, because I want to be able to give direction to the applicant, you know, do we make a determination that it's two-way tonight? Do we send it back to Plan Commission as part of the detail for them to evaluate it?
It would be helpful, you know, if they got some direction tonight, because with the detailed plan. Sorry. With the detailed plan, we would want them to put a full traffic study together. They've put a preliminary traffic study together that does recommend the conversion of the street, and then we did have, you know, some public comment that wasn't opposed to it, and the Plan Commission was in support of it as well. But we would want them to provide those detailed geometric plans, because effectively, that cost would be put on the developer to do, and we'd want them to explore a little bit more of what that impact would be to the street. So it would be good for them to get some direction tonight, and that would be part of the detailed plan review.
Do you guys care?
Well, when I hear that our traffic study starts contemplating, you know, public use of a road, I do get nervous, because then we're going to bear the cost of so. But again, if this is an opportunity to improve the way the traffic flows here, we're willing to take that on.
Right.
You know, I hate to put Pastor Klein on the spot, but, you know, does the church have a position on one-way or two-way? To me, that would be perhaps the biggest, I would put far more credence in that.
I can't speak for the congregation regarding that, but living at the corner of Second and Grant, just hearing you talk, I can see some issues by making it two-way, to be honest with you. Because right now, the doctor's office across the street, they use that for parking, and they park one way down that way.
Yeah.
Kids already know that that's a one-way street, and they treat it as such.
Right.
Also, from Hinsdale Avenue up to Third Street, there is a lot of car acceleration to get to that stop sign, from Hinsdale Avenue to Third Street. And if you've got a car coming up that road, you're going to need some sort of stop sign or some sort of, for both, for both Second Street and Grant. That's just my opinion, because you're going to have cars accelerating.
Right.
It's just a matter of time.
Yeah, so my view on things like this is, the more issues you decide, the slower the process goes, and the more you get people coming who just have an issue about whether it's one-way or two-way. I had thought that the issues should be separate, that we should decide that. And then Luke brought up the good point that maybe, you know, there's certain, you know, doing all this development at once and making that conversion may have some synergistic effects to doing it. I don't know. But I guess my thought is, if it becomes an issue that's driving the process, whether it's one-way or two-way, then I don't want to address this part of this development, because then we got a problem with the development.
That was your early advice, and so I was disappointed when the topic came up at Plan Commission, because I felt I had an obligation to respond to it.
Yeah.
I think keeping them separate would be good development.
Yeah.
Just because, again, I'm repeating a phrase, but we could experience the tail wagging the dog.
Exactly.
And so, if I had my druthers, I would leave it out. I would retain a one-way approach on that street, and if it's something that we want to explore, we do it independent of this project.
And the other thing that I found in those government is, things kind of build. You may put this out there, and you think no one's opposed to it, and you get to the final meeting before the board, and you get 15 people show up and say, I don't want that two-way. And all of a sudden, it's not about the development project anymore, it's about the street and whether we have two-way. I just don't want to have that complexity added. That's my biggest concern. If there's some cost savings involved, I'm all ears, but I just, my experience tells me that the more issues you add, the more problems you have going down the road, because people come out of the woodwork, and that's the issue that they're concerned about.
You know, I don't know that the development would take any different approach if it were one-way or two-way, other than we would bear the obligation or responsibility of studying it very closely. I do see that we could change street signage and traffic flow easily, and perhaps we see how this development works and is accepted into the community and whether it makes more sense at that time.
Okay.
One thing I'd like to note is, even if the traffic doesn't change, they're still going to be removing those nonconforming parking spaces from the parkway.
That's correct.
And adding some street trees. That was still incorporated into it, whether the traffic changes or not. We probably will need to, with that, look at some actual on-street signage and kind of the parking situation, but that can all be handled as well with the detailed plan and doesn't require the two-way traffic.
Thank you, Bethany. She's absolutely right, and you'll see that we do, in this current conceptual plan, we're eliminating those nonconforming parking spaces, which are currently angled and in front of the southwestern portion of the site. So that will be addressed.
So I too am a fan of age restricted, but the one question that I had is, you took out one of the bedrooms and made it a den, and I was wondering if you didn't do that in the hopes that we would be more amenable to age-targeted if you had one fewer bedroom? Is that what drove that decision?
I don't think so. I think it really just is a result of the way we've seen people live.
Okay.
And in that third bedroom, there ends up being an office and/or a sitting room, and we would anticipate that use more than needing a third bedroom. And there are ways that that space can be flexible, should they have a visitor, but no, there wasn't any gamesmanship on that necessarily. It was more a reaction.
I wasn't suggesting gamesmanship.
Yeah. Poor choice of words on my part, but.
I mean, I thought maybe you did that to, you know, try to convince us that this was going to be less likely for families with children if you didn't have a third bedroom. I just wondered what drove the decision.
I stand by my answer.
So it's just, it's a marketing thing more than.
It's marketing and it's utility, and how these units, we anticipate they'll be used. And we have a lot of empty nesters in our buildings, and we have two-bedroom plus dens, and they function as two-bedroom plus dens. They are not three-bedrooms.
Okay.
Neil? Yeah, just one final thought on the park situation, and I'll throw out at you, and you can throw it back at me. As I look at that South Park, that's the private one, to the south of the building.
Yes.
It's 20 by 60. That's about maybe a third the size of this room. It's not that big. Is it possible at all to make the other park, the East Park, make that the private park, and then just have that South Park be kind of like the one on the west side, that just have some benches on it?
So we explored this thoughtfully, and what we decided was that if you were to cook a cheeseburger and have to walk across your drive aisle, you just wouldn't do it. And so we really want that space in front of the building to be that outdoor living space. That's the first answer. The second is that we can do a lot with 1,200 square feet. You know, we have apartments that are 1,200 square feet. So we think that this could be really thoughtfully designed, and there's a lot we could pack into that space without it feeling overwhelming, and provide really a lot, a very relaxing and nice place for people to hang out, read a book, cook a meal, or have a guest over for a conversation. So, but I hear you. I think it's the right place for it, because of just having to, and we could have elderly people and having to, you know, navigate a sidewalk and pass a drive aisle.
Yeah, I know, you got to pass through the driveway, so I understand that's an issue.
But it was good. I mean, we spent a lot of time debating that.
Sure.
Final thoughts on this matter?
I think it's a good project. I really like it, and I particularly like the fact you're using the existing building. I always take great comfort when somebody's taking a building that has architectural significance to it and reutilizes it. I just think that's great.
We're pumped about that.
Okay, so just to bring everything, we're not voting on this tonight. We're going to vote on this in August. You're close, so you should show up in August.
I will.
Just for something.
You bet.
You know, we're going to, when we vote to move this to the Plan Commission for a detailed plan review, you guys are going to look at the width of the eight or nine feet, to see if you can get all of them at nine feet. We're going to go with age-restricted, pass this on with age-restricted. We're going to look at the depth of the parking space and then the width of the runway. We're going to move it on with leaving Second Street as one-way to bring down, and then we, final decision on the parks is the West Park would be public, which will be, there will be an easement put, so it'll be a public park that is maintained by the private HOA.
And owned.
Private and owned, but we'll have an easement agreement where the village has access to.
Correct. The village code, so that they can get credit for that park space, requires it to be platted, that it will be, you know, open space in perpetuity. So when we have that detailed and final plan, we'll have that language for you guys to review.
What is the credit that they get for that?
The credit is, when you have like a subdivision or residential development, you have to provide park space. In a case like this, because we don't have a lot of space, they're actually not meeting the, like, the size that they would need to donate to the village, and the village wouldn't want to maintain a small little park like this.
Okay, got it, got it.
We're going to restrict rentals to six months or longer, and I think that's it.
Yeah, Luke, I'm not.
You saying about the park?
I'm still up on, I'm still open on age-targeted.
You're still open on age-targeted, okay.
Throwing that out. What school is, is that where you go to?
Madison.
This would be Madison.
Madison and then.
HMS and Hinsdale.
Yeah, we built this big, big school over here. We can get a lot of kids into it. I'm serious. But I know there's other pros and cons, so I'll examine those.
And then the other thing that Luke brought up is, it's the precedent, not just this unit. I mean, if this was a one-off, I would feel differently about it, but, you know, because it's not, that's why I don't want it. Because there's a lot of, Luke and I hear about a lot of properties that they want to redevelop with this kind of concept that are much, much bigger, and if we start allowing age-targeted, I think we may have, you know, it would be difficult to say we're not going to give it to the next guy who comes in with a much, much bigger project. That's my concern.
Yeah, but you can examine each project.
Yeah, you can, but it's more difficult. I mean, people always say, you did this for him, why won't you do it for me? It's a little bit, it's harder to make that argument.
You know, it's tough in this seat to not be fair across all applicants.
I respect all that. I would be very surprised if anybody were to use this project to defend an approach on another because of its uniqueness. And I appreciate you bringing.
That's kind of where I come from a little.
But again, guys, we're okay with the age-restricted. We're willing to agree to it right this minute. My fear, again, is the unintended consequences, and perhaps this is where we need our attorney to help us understand how we get comfortable with that element. Because we don't want to be explaining to a grandmother, can your grandkids visit? Right?
So I don't think it's, I don't think it's that. I mean, I can look at it, but I did look at this once. I don't think that that's, I don't think there's a prohibition of having your grandchild stay over for a night. You know, I think it's.
It's having the grandchild by the house.
It's having your grandchild by.
It's living there and going to school.
Yeah, it's living there and going to school. I'm not sure that.
Interesting.
That's not my recollection of the law.
Attorneys have been through this before.
Yeah, yeah, so it's, and I think it only has to be one of the people who live there who has to meet the age requirement. That's my recollection.
Okay.
So I don't think it's nearly as restrictive.
Okay. Well, we'll bone up on that and try to develop a more refined understanding of it, and we appreciate the discussion around it. And again, just thinking back to the advice we got the last time we appeared before the Village Board, was that we're not trying to let this define the project.
All right, so on the agenda for August.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate all the cooperation.
Put your names on this and leave it, so we don't have to reprint next time.
Will we just take a look?
You can take it with you, too, yep.
Okay, that takes us to.
Seven D.
Seven D.
Yep, which I have a seven D, and this agenda item is also a first read, and it's to revise an existing intergovernmental agreement between District 86 and the Village of Hinsdale for reciprocal reporting of criminal offenses committed by students. D-86 and the village currently have an agreement in place which ensures that information sharing between the two government bodies follows both federal and state laws and protects the confidentiality of individuals or students. D-86 has requested a change to this agreement to include a statutory change regarding the title of school counselor, to update the review period to be every two years, with the next review date to be at the end of 2023-24. And that's really all of it. We have had an attorney review the agreement and is okay with the changes. Some questions? Consent agenda?
Yeah. Okay, that takes us to 8A, who had the accounts payable?
I did. Everything was in order. Make a motion to approve payment of the accounts payable for the period of June 9, 2022 through July 6, 2022, in the aggregate amount of $1,653,000. $15.02 is set forth on the list provided by the village treasurer, of which a permanent copy is on file with the village clerk.
Second.
We'll call vote.
Trustee Pastuma?
Aye.
Trustee Harlow?
Aye.
Trustee Stifler?
Aye.
Trustee Burns?
Aye.
Trustee Banky?
Aye.
I have a motion with respect to consent agenda items 8B through F.
Move to approve consent agenda items 8B through 8F.
Second.
We'll call vote.
Trustee Pastuma?
Aye.
Trustee Harlow?
Aye.
Trustee Stifler?
Aye.
Trustee Burns?
Aye.
Trustee Banky?
Aye.
Neil?
Okay, so we have a outdoor dining permit application for another restaurant, in this case, Corner Bakery. And this is basically like we've been doing with the other several restaurants that we've already approved for outdoor dining. They were going to be occupying a spot just to the, just to the west of Garfield and on the north side of Hinsdale Avenue, there'd be two parking spaces, as shown in the diagram. They're going to be putting, I think, two or three tables there, and nice new black tables and chairs. The one thing they're going to be looking, the one thing they're seeking that is outside of our regular regulations that we've drawn up for outdoor dining, is to have a garbage container outside on the premise, because it's my understanding that Corner Bakery, there's no waitstaff. Are you from, oh, yeah, maybe, yeah. Could you come up, please?
Sure. So just, we've talked about a little bit today with the traffic. That's a dangerous corner, I think, you know, like the southbound traffic not having to stop and whatever. So if our customers are going to utilize the patio, they will be to-go customers.
Right.
So that's going to be plastic bags, boxes, silverware, so I want to give them something to throw that away.
So they can bus their own tables?
Exactly.
You don't have any waitstaff out there?
We're going to service this area constantly throughout the day, obviously, but, you know, instead of them just leaving it on the table, blowing away, whatever have you, they have a place to put it.
Right.
And you'll have somebody that'll just kind of keep an eye on it.
Absolutely. Probably every 20 minutes, half an hour.
No, no.
Oh, no. Oh, no.
Garbage can.
It's a garbage can.
Oh, yeah, okay, okay.
I was speaking with Bethany about it's about fifty-six, it looks like a village garbage can.
Right, yeah.
Well, that was the other idea, too. I don't want to overfill the village garbage cans if they should utilize those.
We appreciate that.
So, that would be us taking care of ourselves. We would leave the, the metal structure out where it is, but there's a plastic insert that the actual garbage goes into in the bag. That would be, that could be taken out nightly, put, you know, stored in the foyer.
Yep. And it's in our new village color black.
Yep. And I wanted to make a motion to make this area age restricted.
Did you want approval or not on this?
Depends on the age.
Besides that, it's just a simple three, three-table patio. We don't have an umbrella. It'll be, you know, three matching tables, six matching chairs with the black steel garbage can.
Just to point out, as on the drawing here, or not drawing, photograph, it's gonna take up two parking spaces, but they actually use the third, half of the third parking space to put the barriers, to put the planters on there.
And Bethany pointed out that Starbucks on the other side of the block is set up just like, they have like two and a half of the parking spots.
Yeah, two and a half parking spaces, right.
So, we're not having cut, or drivers park right on the barrier.
And open their door.
Right.
Okay. So, any other questions? Can I make a motion?
Sure.
Move to approve outdoor dining permit in the village right of way until October thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two for Corner Bakery, subject to final permit issuance by the Community Development Department and subject to any conditions to be set forth by the Building Commissioner and Fire Department upon final inspection.
Second.
Will call vote?
Trustee Pastuma?
Aye.
Trustee Harlow?
Aye.
Trustee Stifler?
Aye.
Trustee Burns?
Aye.
Trustee Banky?
Aye.
Great. Thank you much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Age restricted was very funny.
Everybody's a comedian, you know?
Those things they all middle school.
Middle school.
All right, Luke.
All right. Which brings us to Agenda Item Nine B. This is a second read, so we are gonna vote on the matter this evening. It's in an ordinance for a floor area ratio variance at three oh seven South Lincoln Street. The applicant is asking for relief under Section three dash one ten E three in order to add a second-story bedroom to the home. The total variance request is for three hundred and fifty-four square feet of additional FAR for a home that was constructed in the eighteen nineties. It's important to note that all neighbors within two hundred and fifty feet have been notified of this. There has been no opposition to it whatsoever. Also, the ZBA did meet on this and recommended six to zero that we approve this variance. I would also lastly like to note that, as we've discussed at the last board meeting, the variance request meets the standards of Article fourteen, which we recently referred to Plan Commission and is currently being reviewed there. So, this is, this is what President Colley refers to as a carrot to vintage homes.
Is it age restricted?
No.
Nope.
Eighteen ninety. Just to clarify, the, the RBA has, has the word one and the number zero opposed. I just want to make sure that's...
Where are you on that, Matt?
On the, the, the front page, on discussion recommendation.
That's typo.
It's a typo. It was a zero opposed.
Gotcha, yep.
Yeah. Yeah.
Thank you.
For the couch. Okay. Hearing no objections to this, I'm gonna make a motion to approve an ordinance approving a floor area ratio variation at three oh seven South Lincoln Street, Hinsdale, Illinois, ZBA Case Number V dash zero two dash twenty-two. Second.
Will call vote?
Trustee Pastuma?
Aye.
Trustee Harlow?
Aye.
Trustee Stifler?
Aye.
Trustee Burns?
Aye.
Trustee Banky?
Aye.
Tollway update?
Nothing to report, President Colley.
Anything from the staff or department heads?
I just want to recognize Heather Baracus as this is her final board meeting today. Heather has taken a position with the City of Elmhurst in a different capacity than Parks and Rec. She's going to be doing economic development and just wanted to wish you congratulations and wish you well. I don't know how you could leave during Parks and Rec Month, though. I think that's betraying you. But, anyway, congratulations and good luck.
Congratulations, Heather.
Congratulations, Heather.
All right. Anything else? No? Any citizens? No one in the room? Trustee comments? No reason for a closed session? Can I have a motion adjourned?
Motion adjourned.
Second. Will call vote?
Trustee Pastuma?
Aye.
Trustee Harlow?
Aye.
Trustee Stifler?
Aye.
Trustee Burns?
Aye.
Trustee Banky?
Aye.
Thank you.[931.57]